Okay, it's I'm being turned in from the floor. We have a final review. All the time, we're going to go on.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Anthony.
Present.
Councilwoman Ivey.
Here.
Councilman Booker.
Here.
Councilman Gere.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilman O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Riddick.
Here.
Eve Myers.
Here.
Eve Knut.
Here.
Amy Cuardo.
Here.
Manager Saversky.
Here.
He has one.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. But I want to need to be added for the move from the consent agenda or the regular agenda. At this time, we can ask for anything to be removed from the consent agenda and that will be placed on the regular agenda. And we're going to talk individually. Oh, no, sorry. I said citizens coming. My, my fault. Any citizens coming? Saying none. Moving back to that business, um. Is there any, is there anyone that wants to change anything on later? Mr. So, so excuse me, there's no additions to this agenda.
I want to listen to the justice.
For any amendments or changes to the proposed names?
I wasn't, uh, yeah, I, I wasn't certain that I made the motion for the, uh, to adopt the ordinance 73, setting the tax rate for 2022. I wasn't, I wasn't certain that I made that motion for that, for the, um, yeah, for the 7th act on ordinance 73, setting the tax rate for 2022.
Does anybody ever call, who made the motion? I don't, I don't remember.
All right, well.
Um.
No.
We can check the recording.
We have to check on the recording. Yeah, did you hear that? Yep. And I might very well have made it, but I just wasn't 100% certain that I did.
So let's, uh, can we look forward with the approval of the minutes subject to confirmation when Mr. Booker's on the motion for that?
Good.
So we'll just, once that is confirmed, then it's going to be approved.
So.
Just, so ask for a motion for approval of the agenda. We've, um, changed to the minutes. Uh, manager remaining until December 21st, 2021, subject to verification on the motion for, uh, the tax ordinance. Is there a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a victim makes the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a meal seconds? Any further discussion? Saying none. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All opposed? The agenda was approved. Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda was originally necessary because there are few, pretty controversial in nature. It was rightly due to require additional discussion. The consideration will be taken as a single motion. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
There's Agartha makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Miss, Mr. Anthony, second. Is there any discussion? You have any others? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to the regular agenda.
The regular agenda items in front of council for Monday, January 3rd, 2022. Approval of Resolution 2, 2022, opposing Pennsylvania State House redistricting plan. That was attached with three other factors.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Agartha makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anthony, second. Any discussion?
Just for the public, there are, they are hearing and taking comments, um, that you can read into the website and they will read those out in several hearings. There's a couple of, um, opportunities for the public to speak out about this. If you're not familiar, Mechanicsburg will be divided, um, from the 87 and the 88 districts. So we will have two representatives in Mechanicsburg, which I think, um, is confirming.
Agreed.
Yeah, this resolution would show our states for that.
The five person district.
That's it. Any other comments on that proposed resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those are some passes you know.
And I have those resolutions for you guys to sign tonight before you leave.
Thank you. Did you get everybody's interest on that one or is it just my, it was just council?
On the, on the, uh, redistricting resolution, it's just yours and mine.
Okay.
Uh, on the resolution for Tanya, which we approved under consent, it is everybody's.
Okay.
Uh, the next agenda item, approval of the staff to readvertise for council meetings for the first Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM for its regular business meeting with committee meetings immediately thereafter upon the conclusion of the regular council meeting.
Thank you. It's our motion.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Booker makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Martin, second. Any discussion?
That's where it's advertised.
It's advertised in the Sentinel. Uh, it's where our, it's our, uh, common publication is where we advertise that.
Okay, thank you. And we have to do this, um, to move the committee meetings to the fact portion of the agenda so that we're not running out of time versus they were previously at the beginning of the, of the agenda. And, um, this way that if there are any recommendations, uh, for a committee to council, they could go on the next meeting's agenda. Uh, because of sunshine law, we can't make recommendations to council through an action agenda later tonight because we have to advertise those agenda items 24 hours.
24 hours ahead of time and that's if it involves finances. Uh, and for council to be able to take regular business, they have to advertise their meeting to start at a certain time. It can start after that time, but it can't start before it. So to move the council meeting up to 7:00 PM, we have to readvertise for the entire year. We'll just do it all with one advertisement.
It's just a matter of, it's going to always start a little later. We can't start early. We have to, have to.
And in turn, this way, it, uh, I end up probably end up saving money because, um, we wouldn't have to advertise every time we wanted to have a committee meeting. Right? Well, you, we're not have to advertise if, if you have a committee meeting outside of, of this, of the first Tuesday. Certainly. Yes, you will have, you will have to advertise it, particularly if there's going to be more than three council persons there.
Yes, and we're supposed to keep, we're supposed to keep committee business within this framework. There will from time to time be some business that will have to be discussed outside of, but ideally we want to keep it.
Sure, but in theory.
Yeah, but theory, yes.
Yes, okay.
And not only will that save us on advertising money, but also on staff time and the cost to man those meetings as well as all time and planning them and, um, scheduling them, so. Things of a discussion on that. Saying none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're approved. We have it. And moving on to committee meetings. Um, this is when the workers onboard and turn each committee over to the committee chair. And it's not going to be a lot of business tonight and we're not going to have any reports because this is the first meeting. But, um, I thought it was a good exercise for us just to go through this and start getting the practice of this type of format. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anthony first, um, he's going to go through finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our committee, which comprises myself, Mr. Gure and yourself, is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. And we have two items on our agenda this evening, discussion on establishing a treasurer's report. The idea here, I think, was that as we have a new treasurer, it would make sense for that person to report to all, or at least to the council or to the committee, um, what's happening with it. So we've been getting reports all along, uh, financial reports, but it would be good for her to put together a report on a monthly basis. How does the committee feel about that?
An example of that was included in the package. I think it's good. I mean, in the past, we haven't had something like this. I think it's a good idea to have, for council to have a monthly breakdown of all accounts to pull out of this. And it wouldn't be something necessarily with the treasurer, we'd have to come there physically over with. It would be, uh, reported on either the first or second meeting, whichever makes sense in her schedule. And will be on the agenda as, uh, like a motion to accept the treasurer's report as per that.
You know, we would want to pay her to come on out to every meeting just to have her private.
But, but it would be good to she make it.
Yeah, and she can do that. I mean, monthly, when, because you don't get like the check register and your, your, your cash is only paying the bills once a month. So during those, that financial time, we can bring everything, you know, and just do everything as, as one lump sum and give a report where we stand with the balance sheet. Yeah, so.
Great. All right. Does she, when they came around, she was a.
Yes, she's fine with that. As a matter of fact, current weather, we're working on it, uh, to get a, a skeleton laid out of what you have provided on the Excel spreadsheet. So we can go from there and, and create that. Uh, it's a simple matter of PDF. We don't have as many counts, as counts as what was on the example, but, um, it's relatively simple for her to let together.
Excellent.
Yep.
Awesome. Let's see, uh, are there any more comments on that report, please? Again, so, uh, report on the research status, uh, of the issues concerning Portland's West Simpson Street. Uh, I guess Roger, we're just thinking maybe this would be a good time to. Yep. Follow the street.
Absolutely. Uh, everyone got a copy of my memo that I sent out that had a few points on it. Though this took up the most space on that, on that report, so, um, but I can, do you want me to read this off or do you just want to add it into the minutes?
Just enter it in since you've already provided it to us.
I think there's some points on here that we should, probably should bring up. All right. Um, approved code services has been over and gone over the property. Um, the property is right now currently in compliance with the building permit. There are a few little things that they have to look, to look at as we're going to the building project. Um, the applicant has come in and filled out a heart application for the changes that were done to the front of the house. That will not make last night would have been the heart meeting, or time would have been the heart meeting for January. So that will have to be on the February agenda. So there will be a February heart meeting. Um, that's, he's, he's got everything that he needs for the heart. And then the other part of this is, um, some of the questions that were raised as far as the building permit application and the, uh, the zoning application were raised, uh, that would have made them incomplete. That was a, something that was put on there by a past code enforcement officer, uh, without interpretation from the solicitor. Um, it's a broad brush comment. If something doesn't meet, and this is where the code enforcement officer and for the staff, um, determines whether it meets the hard requirement or not. So that being in there that it would be an incomplete permit application is not entirely correct. So those are going to be taken off of there. We're in the process of updating all of those and Solicitor Cassidy will be reviewing all the applications before we put them out for public use. So just to make sure that this doesn't, that kind of thing doesn't arise again. So that is, from our point of view, proof codes is, is on the ball with this. They've got it covered. They've been over. Um, he's come in for the heart situation, um, and we're going to get that handled. So everything that, from a code standpoint, we're in compliance, they're in compliance with, at that property at this point in time.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Roger? Thank you, Roger.
Yep.
Uh, I just wanted to add then, uh, just a couple of things. Our, our idea this year with the finance committee is to help, um, educate council on all of it as possible. Uh, and so we're going to have PFM come in, uh, sooner rather than later as our financial planning organization to educate us on where we are, what we can be doing. I think we talked about February. Also want to do, uh, some more work as it relates to, with the treasurers, or at least the audit review and pension review and some other things. So, um, some great things. I don't know, uh, Councilman Gure, do you have anything that you wanted to bring at all before we close out the finance committee?
No, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the export of senior outreach, Councilman O'Neil.
Well, I don't have, I don't have much to say, other than my enthusiasm for being chair of this, uh, this committee. Um, the, the members of our, um, website and just promoting Mechanicsburg in general is a passion of mine. So I'm looking forward to working with everyone on that and, um, all the decisions that fall, fall under that. Looking forward to learning more about that.
Thank you. Who's the economic development? Chris.
Looking forward tonight other than to mirror councilperson O'Neil over there and saying that, uh, I think we're going to have a good year this year and I'm looking forward to working with the other members of it today. Seems as though great things are flowing around in the brief, so thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership.
Thank you. Do you want to turn it over to Ms. Agartha?
Sure, I would be happy to.
Mr. PMP?
Ms. Agartha, you can move.
Well, thank you. DMP is in need. Um, we are meeting at the gathering place. Um, one of the initiatives, of course, is the Renaissance Project. So I'm just talking about when we will take down the building and, um, kind of the process surrounding that. I know rather they've been working with you about discussing timing of that, making sure that, um, they have some graphs so we're not into a muddy mess, um, and also just engaging the businesses. So, um, there's new president Brian Jean is, um, has retired her presidentship, which, um, she has served on DMP for many years. We're very happy for her to be an advisor now. So just a lot of good things and re-vamping, I think, um, the biggest concern is being part of the comp plan. They've stepped back many times once we get going. They would like to be invited to share their thoughts on Mechanicsburg. That is my report.
Thank you very much.
I put, I put an item here on, under community economic development. I think it's probably something community should keep on its, uh, on its number agenda and, um, to get an update from EPE on boroughs comprehensive. And I, we discussed this and they weren't available or didn't have an update for us.
They did not have an update. Um, they're, it's kind of like us a couple of weeks ago. COVID hit them pretty hard out there. They've been in and out of the office. Um, people just up and down. Their main company will not let them travel at this point in time, so, um, and then with sort of vacations in, the holidays, it got pretty difficult to get a hold of anybody. So I will follow up with them next week, um, and I will be in the office more next week too. So, um, I'll follow up with them and hopefully have something for next meeting in January.
But maybe if I will offer another view and call you, thanks, since they're not.
We can find out, yeah, definitely.
Thank you. What's your opinion? All right, thank you. Mr. Burger, how did works on safety?
Uh, I'm really excited to do it. I collaborate with Wastheaf, Fireteeth and, uh, Amy Cuardo to, um, to help improve and continue to keep our, uh, our community safe and figure out ways where we can, uh, you know, just overall better, uh, things that we do and keep doing the great things that we do. Um, with that, uh, I'm going to pass it to them and see if there's any, uh, report that they'd like to make for their, uh, uh, particular actions this evening.
I don't have anything on.
And then I keep that for either Red Report and then Amy Cuardo.
Uh, the only thing that I would say is, uh, I'll provide a group COVID update. Uh, the Pennsylvania Department of Health has reported the highest number of cases that Pennsylvania has seen since the beginning of pandemic over the last week. Um, there is a day last week that was 17,520 cases and over the last four days, it's 2,000 cases. Um, so the, the variant has certainly hit Pennsylvania hard. We also know that's probably a fraction of the actual number of cases because of the number of people who are doing at home testing. In which case they're likely not reporting those cases to the Department of Health. Uh, so it continues to be an issue. Hospitalizations went up by about 600 over the weekend. Um, our, our hospitals locally are, are certainly challenged right now. So, uh, it continues to be an issue. Uh, we're hoping that there's some talk that nationally that after, as we get through the month of January, uh, the, uh, sharing stranglehold on the US may start to lean, but we'll have to wait and see on that. Uh, but continue to take all the precautions you can to protect yourself and your family.
Thanks.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
Amy Cuardo, quick question for you. There's been some information that I've heard. Wonder if you have anything on it. Is FEMA expanding ICUs in our tri-county area?
So FEMA provided hospital support to two locations in Pennsylvania. One is the Lookberry area and the other is York Hospital, uh, which is well established, York Hospital in York City. Uh, there's, I think, a lot of continued discussions between the Department of Health and Pennsylvania, where the city management agency and FEMA about options for further assistance, but with the entire state or the entire country dealing with the same type of issues, FEMA only has so much staffing that they can provide for assistance as well, so. Uh, I, I think there is requests out there, um, from local hospitals to the Department of Health for assistance. But unlike in the beginning of 2020, when the Department of Health had a contract with a nursing company to come in and provide staffing support at hospitals that were in need, uh, I think everybody right now is feeling such a shortage of healthcare workers that I don't think that, I know that contract no longer exists and I don't think that there would be an ability to even put a contract out for that and find somebody to be able to do it.
And a follow-up, you know, on.
Right. I'd also heard there was a possibility that the National Guard was being called in in certain specific areas of the tri-county region. Do you have information on that?
So I haven't heard any regards to the National Guard being deployed anywhere. The National Guard has worked closely with the Pennsylvania Department of Health as assistance for long-term care facilities, so nursing homes and personal care homes and assisted living facilities. But I'm not sure necessarily what their role would be in a hospital setting.
And what I've heard, and it could be completely wrong, but I appreciate so much your information, is that they were going to assist in, uh, either establishing ICUs or in assisting with testing, which seems to be stretched at the moment.
I can say that I've heard some rumblings that there may be something happening in regards to assisting with testing, but I do not believe it would involve the National Guard, although they do have the capacity to do that. They've done that at the long-term care facilities. Um, I can assure you that the Department of Health is trying everything that they can to assist the hospitals and all of our local entities in this, uh, but, um, trying to put out contracts without a disaster declaration is more challenging than it was previously. And even if a contract goes out there, uh, there's still the 30-day turnaround and all the wait that has, all the bureaucracy that has to be dealt with, that you can't do an emergency, the Department of Health can't do an emergency contract anymore. That went away with the, and the disaster declaration. Uh, and the other challenge is, even if you put a contract out there, there may not be the contractor who's able to fill what you're looking for. So, uh, it's the entire healthcare system right now. It's not just hospitals or long-term care facilities or any one entity, EMS. It's not just any one entity in the, in the system. It's the entire system right now that is really struggling.
Okay, so, yep. How would you know the report pretty well, Mark?
I just wanted to just shoot up an opportunity if you wanted to read into the record, who's, who put on the statistics. I think that's important.
Okay. Yeah, the fire department services for the year 2021 in review of, uh, the council of the fire department responded to 437 incidents in 2021. Notably, this is the business year ever recorded for the fire department. 342 of the calls were fire-related, but 95 of the calls were EMS-related. The fire department staff averaged nine personnel per call and at this time of day, it was 2:00 in the afternoon. Oddly, most of the incidents occurred between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM. So that was part of a change, uh, traditionally much to close at night, but for some reason in 2021, we were extremely busy during the day. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Chief, chief, uh, we listen mostly, uh, meetings that occur between 10:00 and 6:00. Do you know a percentage?
I don't have that with me.
Is that something we might be able to get from this?
Sure, but I can give you percentages on all of it. Uh, there's more detail with our rundown report. We'll get into a, a lot, um, more detail with this. So I can go ahead and give you a rundown and present it. I'll send it to council.
And, and not to go too long, but as a neighbor to one of the two stations, I just have to commend you and all of the firefighters for the outstanding job they've done. Their response times are incredibly fast, uh, very professional, very professional every time we see them. So thank you so much for the work.
Yeah, thank, thank them. They make my job very easy. Thank you. I'll pass that along too.
Probably parts of recreation, Ms. Martin.
Uh, I don't, uh, have a, um, formal report to give, um, but I am looking forward to chairing this committee and recreation and parks and our pool is, um, always at the forefront. Um, for me, um, it's a passion of mine. Uh, I've had children that have grew up playing in the parks and, you know, running around town and swimming in the pool and so, um, keeping the town, keeping the town beautiful and safe is very near and dear to me. So I'm excited to, uh, chair this committee. Um, and, um, having been on the rec board previously before I was elected, um, and being able to be the liaison. So I'll still get to see my friends on the rec board. So that's awesome. So, uh, Councilman O'Neil, do you have anything to add for Chatri and EAC?
Uh, I, the one thing that, that was particularly, uh, in my mind, since, uh, I know I gave a pretty extensive report last, uh, opportunity I was given. But, um, one thing that the, this is more, uh, your direction here, uh, that, that Chatri was interested in, um, looking into exploring further was the idea of potentially getting a live tree living in the other side of the Renaissance project. So I thought that would be something to be excited about and maybe if that, you know, he can collaborate with them. Thank you.
Um, I know we have some items, well, there's some items that, um, the rec board wanted to us to discuss. Should we take a look at that at the next committee meeting?
Yeah, they did not really make a.
We didn't vote.
They didn't, yeah, they didn't really send it to council completely. I think there's still some more details to work out on that.
I know. So maybe items for discussion to be raised.
Yep.
So for the report on establishing 34 West.
Yeah, I'm meeting with Engineer McGolcy and, uh, Rebecca Yurk on Thursday morning to discuss some opportunities, uh, that the county may have, uh, some funds that we can tap into for, to help us out with this project. We do have it in the capital fund, um, but there's also some other things that she wants to look at. Uh, she wants to make a presentation to Greg and I, um, to see if we're interested in potentially extending the project with some grant money from the county. So, um, we're going to try to keep moving on this. Fortunately, we haven't had any snow of any significant amount, um, to test that roof out over there. Uh, with Chief Myers, we've noticed that it has moved a little bit more, so we're keeping an eye on it, um, and trying to get, I mean, if I can get a little bit of a contractor to come in here and do anything with it, to try to support it up a little more. So, uh, the guys are not using that over there to park, um, to park in the police cars outside. So we're being as safe as we can with it, but we're going to see where it goes, um, come Thursday morning, uh, when I meet with Engineer McGolcy and Rebecca Yurk.
Great.
Good.
I think that takes the property folks to recreation. Moving on to the personnel committee in the faculty.
So just to report that we've formalized some more things with our personnel committee. So I look forward to some goal setting with Roger in the first of the year, being able to provide some value.
being able to provide invaluable tools to support him and his great work with the borough. So I look forward to chairing this committee and putting support.
Yes, I'll just add to that. I think it'll go a long way for council to take care of the general operations and procedures policy and the reorganization meetings. And that for the ten years that I've been on council is the first time we've had one of those, but people standing behind me. I'm here to have some sort of guideline and focus on what all the expectations are. So I'm excited for that and I thank you all for your support of that. And I think it will, it will really help with the operation of council and with councils communication with each other and communication with the manager. So I appreciate all your support of that. That's all I have. Anything else to say?
Just that, we concluded, thank you.
Thank you. That seems clear of the release for council. I'm sure any citizens in common. Jane, no? Any other additions?
Just real quick, the A R P funds. Zelenkovsky and Axelrod could not be here tonight. Cory was down in Philadelphia with an emergency surgery with his father. They're planning on being here hopefully either next meeting or the first one in September where he gets up here to give over everything. The forty plus pages of rules we have, I downloaded everything. There it's it's forty pages, but it's three columns like newsprint on each side. So I'm going through that. We'll get that squared leg. I know that's what Zelenkovsky and Axelrod also reviewing at this time so that they can advise us going forward. So as soon as the second set of funds comes available, we'll be applying for those to be deposited and then we can proceed with those.
Is that something we can provide the council on a list just in case anybody has trouble sleeping at night?
I can give you copies printed. Yeah, I can, I can give you the links. But so you're, you're right, it will.
Good night.
Yeah, just as long as you don't email me at ten thirty.
All right.
So we're still working on that. Once we get the, this is what we've been waiting for, that final road to come down from Trigory. Now we can start using some of those funds. Plus we're in 2022 where our consultant told us to wait until 2022 to start spending any of that money. So right now, the only thing we have allocated for, I think, was twenty six thousand dollars for the survey work that that Penney was doing for the authority. And that's just an allocation that hasn't been paid for yet. So that's the only thing that we have right now that's allocated on that one.
I remember I saw an article in the most recent P S A P newsletter about how communities are using hard funds and some of the reason is there's a reminder of how that funds we have that some of them were using on in many ways and some of it was for recreation and.
Well, they give an opportunity. I don't think there's enough there that we're going to pay the entire borough. I mean, and and in the same way, there's not a major infrastructure project in that in that amount of funds. I think a lot of the smaller projects that we've been putting off by not doing, the A D system in this room, you know, being able to put stuff out on the internet, stream from the meetings and stuff like that. I think those things can be taken care of relatively simple with this money. It's one of those wish list items that we just haven't, you know, broken down lots of the time for. But there are some big projects in here that that we can do. I mean, the pool fixes, yes. There's a couple of different things that we can look at as far as the building goes. You know, I mean, I would, I would like, if speaking with Nate, this might not be the last pandemic we see. This may be, this may be something that we have to be able to pivot for. I'd like to find a way that, you know, we could quickly move into a situation where we can keep the workers safe and the residents safe that come into this building. We've made some changes, but I think there's more that we could make going forward.
Do the A V system, like visual system, you know, what work has been done already? Just getting quotes on that and.
We've gone through our third element, our A V system or our technology I T firm. They've worked up a system very similar to what Silver Springs has and Lower Allen has. It's a little modified for this boat, this room because of the columns and stuff they presented with a problem. But there's, so I think it's a full camera system. There'll be a keyboard here that I can control what cameras are on and when, and if somebody comes in with the right, with a P D F or something that they want to give in a presentation, we can actually put it up on the, on the big screen with a picture of them and have a camera automatically behind you that would shine to the podium, that'd shoot to the podium so that they could be on there. Plus, as soon as I hit the button, it's instantly streaming and recording onto YouTube.
I think I think that we have the committee probably take a look at those options and need to sort of communicate that, or communications committee, first of all, community outreach to take a look at that and see if we can, what they think is acceptable for them to use and.
Yeah, the system we have in here worked for at the beginning of Covid, but it's, it's a, it's basically a security camera with a, with a microphone mounted above the podium. And the spout sizes are huge. They're just, they're massive to deal with. And this is a system that's actually set up. It'll be tied into our microphone system. It'll be tied into the, the stand microphone. And then we can, we'll be able to do things. I mean, it's push button from my concern, so.
Does anyone have a proposal format, like a written format that you could pull?
I can get one from them, yeah.
That's right.
And has the inclusion of video chat been considered in the audio visual project?
Not necessarily because of staff requirements. I don't know how we would, we'd do a video chat with, with residents. It's not a meeting. That, that's going to present a lot of problems.
Would it be possible to do, like if council number one do attend virtually?
I think we need to clear that with the solicitor casualty.
Well, so I understand the rule is that this amount, the car has to be physically present. And then we don't have the authority, like.
Right.
And she's had an iPad and on the phone. But it'd be nice if we could have some sort of built in system where that, I think that's.
I think, man, I think there are several different applications. Certainly citizens that wish to participate is one aspect. But council persons who are able to join the meeting, given the legal constraints, is just, is a very important aspect, as is committee participation. Committee meetings are not governed by the same regulations that the council meetings are. And now that we've incorporated those committee meetings in this format, it'd be nice to have persons being able to participate, even even when you stand with some colleagues who can't be here. You spoke a moment or two ago about the potential for future pandemic. Certainly, we all hope that that won't be the case. But to have the technology installed, shame time, at the audio visual project would yield significant savings and you're using very similar technology. I, I need to the community, of course, to, to determine what those things are. I can speak to the labor issue. We utilize this technology in our workplace routinely and it largely goes unmonitored. But in the event that it needs to be staffed, it only requires a single individual with very little interaction to monitor the entire system and to control the entire system. So I know from experience that it's very doable and it would certainly, I think, yield a lot of benefit every day, but certainly if we do have another significant issue.
Can I, I'm just a clarification. Are you talking about like during the meeting, we would have residents participating through a chat during the meeting or?
I think that's to be determined by the body at a later time. But I think that the three, the three areas would be citizen participation, number one, and no, no particular order, just I'm just bullet point them. Council participation and committee participation. And then as a fourth, just to add, we have two esteemed colleagues that are not here this evening. They perhaps could join and give comment or answer questions or participate in some meaningful way. The technology is so widely used today and it's very easy. It's relatively inexpensive. I would just hope that the committee could investigate that as an addition to the project, which I don't think would increase costs very much.
I agree. I think that one of the most important is citizen participation. Whether they chat or not, I think it's a secondary issue, but being able to have a high quality experience, I think, is, is key.
That's the main, that is the main focus of the whole, that whole project, is to be able to do something and stream it and get it out there so that people can see it as it's going on, so.
So I think it would be a topic for a future committee or meeting, something for the committee to take a look at. See if it, the program will be supervision and then the cost and what was that. And that is something that the A R P funds.
At this point in time, that is something the A R P funds can, can take care of, yes.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Sibery.
Any other additions?
Uh, today was my last day of radiation, so. And as you know, we find they kind of messed up a little bit. I'm still, so I will, I'm not, I wasn't supposed to be here tonight anyway. They, they completely drained my immune system, but I'm here because this is what we need to do.
We'll get your wife, right?
I know, as you guys have, you have been more than, you guys have been more than generous seeing me through this. I have some follow ups with the doctors to go and probably another year or two of immunology to go through. But they're both looking for positive. I gained ten pounds since the last couple of weeks and it's not just because of Christmas. So we're, we're doing pretty good. I appreciate all the thoughts, prayers, well wishes I've got from everybody in the community and all you guys. You've been so supportive. Staff has been really brave and supportive with it. So I'm just had to be careful for the next couple of days. So I'm really tired as of the Covid stuff. Like I said, my immune system is down to zero. So I probably will be working from home a lot this, the rest of this week. And so I get another blood test to see what my white blood cell counts at. So I thank you all and looking forward to tearing into it again once I get back on both feet. Thank you all.
Thank you. Happy New Year to all and good health. End of report. Ms. Martin.
I'm just excited to be here. Happy to get started.
As well, and happy New Year to everyone. Just my congratulations to the newest members of council for working with you and to our newest president, congratulations.
Thank you.
Just to let you guys know, on Trinco, Sandler is opening up a site that will provide low and free healthcare for individuals at some mechanic's brother, the West Shore area. They're hoping to start some construction in April. So as you're driving out of town from mechanic's, please just send well wishes to them. It is a tough time to be fundraising for clinics, but they will be offering a lot of great services, which includes dental and eye care. So if you know individuals who want to fix incomes, those are services that are lacking in this area. So we're very excited that they're expanding. If you're not familiar with Sandler, they have a site in Carlisle that services a lot of patients, but mechanic's is definitely in need of that. Carlisle seems so far, but we're happy to have it. Thank you and happy New Year to everyone.
I know, nothing's that.
Oh, my congratulations, Mr. Council President and Vice President and President of the council. And also to Ms. Menjou, which I thought for sure, Mr. Maryland, he did a great job, of course, as always. We had a couple of good chuckles up on stage and we had quite a large turnout. I thought it was a very big turnout for, does the police have anything to say? How many people were there? I think I saw, I first saw they're counting everybody.
Hope you did, you didn't tell me.
It was, it was very long day. It tends to be between eleven fifteen and midnight. And we had a lot of children out this year, which is really nice to see the weather was upstanding. The fire department did a spot on, perfect job with dropping the wrenches to hit just on midnight. And it was a great, it was a great event, so. I know the community is very appreciative of council's and borough's support of that, of that event. We were one of the two places in the area that actually held it, so it was good. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yuri. Thank you, everyone, once again, and congratulations to the new council members, to Vice President Anthony and President Proton for Darlington.
I will give them a good chance.
Yes, I will. And I'll give a note. Any, any further business?
Yeah, I remember that typically I talk about Covid. But before Covid, I would give you weather updates when they're needed. And we actually may have some snow in the forecast for this week. That would be Thursday night into Friday. Still a lot of uncertainty with that system. It may stay off the coast. It's going to be a system similar to today, but it's expected to today, which hit parts of Delaware and Maryland, Virginia, saw a foot or more of snow. Expecting it to be a little further north this time, but there's still a lot of uncertainty. But we could be looking potentially at a plowable snow, which hopefully won't cause any issues for Roger next door.
And.
I have no. Please.
No, thank you.
I just thank everybody for your patience and cooperation with the new format. I think we'll, we'll go with it. All right, with that, we are going.